Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 1st, 2007. Happy May Day to everybody in the city, and we welcome our viewers on Channel 35, where we are broadcast live on every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. during our regularly scheduled meetings. We also welcome our webcast viewers. You can always watch us online at www.lacity.org, and you can call in and listen to our council meetings via council phone, which is (213) 621-CITY. As I mentioned, we meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in the John F. Rowe Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, except for the first Friday of the month, in which we take the meeting down to Van Nuys City Hall, in our efforts to bring City Council closer to all Angelinos. If you do live closer to Van Nuys, you can always give public testimony there during our regularly scheduled meetings, and we're able to watch you here in council chambers and on Channel 35. Our agendas are available in the back of chambers, as well as through the City Clerk's office and online at lacity.org. Our regular agendas are published 72 hours in advance; our special meeting agenda is 24 hours in advance. And if you walk through the agendas, you'll see that they are split into items that have had public hearings and items where public hearings have not yet been held. If you'd like to speak on one of the items that has not yet held a public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we will make sure that we put you in the mix. All items receive a public hearing, either in committee or here in council chambers. Also, if you'd like to make any general public comments on items that are not on the agenda but are under our jurisdiction, you can fill out a public speaker card for a public comment, and please give that also to sergeant-at-arms, and we will be able to hear that as well. I want to thank the council members that are here on time pursuant to our council rules. Councilmember Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson. Let me add my special good wishes to welcome back Councilmember Reyes. It's good to have him back in chambers, and we welcome him back here. We are awaiting a few other council members. Councilmember Cardenas is excused sick today. Councilmembers Alarcon, Rule, Labange, and Zion are excused on city business and are traveling. That leaves us with Councilmember Han, Councilmember Weezer, and Councilmember Weiss. We are waiting those three members, and we are only at 10 members today, a bare quorum. Our quorum constitutes two-thirds of our body. In order to hold a meeting, thank you, Mr. Weiss. So we're just awaiting Ms. Han and Mr. Weezer to begin the meeting. So if two of them would come down as soon as possible, we will begin this meeting. I want to thank the public and our viewers for their patience while we await Mr. Weezer and Ms. Han. Thank you. Thank you again to Councilmember Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendahl moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds, without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds, without objection. Those two will be approved.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Okay. You could please all rise in council chambers for our pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Harry Edo, if you would be kind enough, in uniform. Mr. Edo, would you come and lead us in the pledge of allegiance in uniform?
(Inaudible)
Thank you. (Inaudible) Thank you, Detective. Appreciate that. Next order of business?
Mr. President, do we should take a public comment at this time?
Yes, let's take a public comment first, and our first public comment is in Van Nuys. Brian Paul will be our first speaker in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Paul.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of speaking in public comment. I'd like to draw your attention to the poor process of the April 4th meeting, and what I felt was discriminatory action on the April 11th meeting. And then I'd like to draw your attention to a possible relocation scam whereby residents can get information on buildings that have a tentative track map, and then they can go ahead and rent a unit, and then immediately leave and collect relocation. And I'd like the city to look into that, and methods of alerting people with tentative track maps of what they need to do. Lastly, failing of the Housing Department. I paid for my rent registration in February and have not received the certificate. It says clearly that landlords may not -- that no landlord shall demand or collect rent for a rental unit without first procuring and serving on a tenant the rental unit -- of a rental unit a copy of the valid registration statement from the city of Los Angeles. The Housing Department have failed again to get those out in a timely fashion. We have to hold our checks now until we receive those, and I wondered who was going to pay those late fees if we can't deposit those checks. Under rent control, we're already in a very difficult situation trying to make ends meet. I really don't see how the Housing Department's poor management can be at all acceptable. I'd like the city to look into those issues, and I thank you again for the opportunity of speaking from the Van Nuys office.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is here in council chambers. Deje Konti.
Deje Konti, 4th district. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for the council. I'm here today again to ask you, council, please do everything within your power to stop the raids on the medical cannabis dispensaries and the raids on patients' homes. The LAPD is abusing their authority. Can I repeat that to you, please? The LAPD is abusing their authority, and I would really like the council's attention on this matter. We have patients who are being raided at their homes. We have dispensaries that are being raided. We had a patient that was arrested, and the bail was set at $100,000. And the first time in medical marijuana history, we had a patient who had their bail set at $100,000. And right now, I feel like your heads are really in the sand about this, and even as I'm speaking now, I have council members who are not paying attention to this issue. And patients are feeling very desperate and very frustrated, and think that the only thing that this council is going to understand is a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Farrell is our next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm in the 5th district. In December 2005, I was arrested for the first time in my home for growing my own medical cannabis. Subsequently, that case was fully dismissed in the interest of justice, return of property ordered by the judge. Fast forward to this last Wednesday, April 25th, the police came to my home again, took me under arrest for the same exact charge, even though I still have my doctor's notes. I'm still following Health and Safety Code 11632.5, and I'm completely in line with the law. I'm financially and mentally unable to keep on handling this harassment, and I feel I'm either going to be forced to leave the city to a friendlier city such as San Francisco or possibly Contra Costa, anywhere else besides here, because if I remain in my home that I've worked so long to own and afford, and that my grandparents passed away and left me the money to buy, then I'm not going to be able to stay here and continue my jobs in the film industry. I beg and plead for your support and for your help in to stop this continual harassment by the police department. As I'm following the law, I'm just trying to stay healthy and maintain myself. Thank you for your time, and I please beg you to end the police harassment of patients like me and the people I care for. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Richard Kearns is our next speaker, and after that will be Michael Carrión.
My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a gay man living in Los Angeles with AIDS. I'm a medical marijuana activist. I also am a citizen journalist. I'm also pretty ill this morning and feel very lucky to be here. I must cut to the chase. I must beg you to stop cross-deputization in the police department. It robs you of the opportunity to set public health policy. When LAPD officers can change themselves into DEA officers, it robs you of the opportunity to set policy. It means that Captain Miller -- it means that Dennis Packer are setting policy for you by assisting in raiding facilities that are legitimate. I'm sick this morning. I can't. I normally throw up my pills. That's one of the reasons that I use medical marijuana. What is wrong with my keeping myself from throwing up? I want to know. I want to know why police officers are dedicated to having a second force in Los Angeles. First force to serve and protect, the second force to bust the right butts. Please pay attention to this. Please stop cross-deputization in raids of medical marijuana clinics. It's completely inappropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Michael Carrión is our last speaker for public comment.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrión. I'm from the 14th district. I've yet to get an answer from any city council member or my councilman himself on why the city of Los Angeles does not maintain their trees like the city of Alhambra does. I've called my councilman's office, and all they tell me is, "We've emailed somebody, and they haven't got back to us." I came in here, and I've asked for a little aggressive enforcement of the same city codes. City codes that you guys enforce when it's convenient. You put people's property into reed, and you force them to clean their properties, but you don't clean your own. Mr. West -- or Mr. Weiss complained about the fire the other day. These are happening in District 14, so I don't hear my councilman complaining. Is it a middle class against a not-so-much-middle-class? I don't know. But communities in my neighborhood burn every year. There is one hill on Soto that burns every year that's owned by the city, it's never been cleaned. City, water, and power, you guys can shuffle on the responsibility on somebody. But this area has burned for the past 20 years that I've been there. Not once has it been cleaned. Why? Because the hypocrisy of the city of Los Angeles forces people into reed to clean their property, but does not have the decency to clean their own property. Then the mayor wants to plant a million more trees. He has no idea where the pruning is going to come from. Who's going to landscape? Who's going to trim them? I don't know. I'll leave that to whoever's in charge of that day. I don't care. The idea is good. It sounds good on paper. When people read that the mayor of Los Angeles planted a million trees, wow, look at what a good job he's doing. But he has no foresight. He has no planning, just like the people who came before him, who have planted all these trees, and they're all falling, have done nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Carrión. Our last speaker, available speaker, is LaShawn Penson.
Good morning. Good morning. I would like to address this to whom it may concern. I'm back again. I've met with you all before, and I wanted to ask, my question is about equal opportunity. I live downtown, fifth and Spring, and I have applied for many, many jobs down here. I am an ex-felon, and I don't think that I'm getting an equal opportunity to even get my foot in the door. Now, I'm aware that when I went to some hotels and department stores down here, and I would ask the questions to different employees in the stores or in the hotels, and I would ask them a simple question, like, "Where's the restroom?" or "Where's human resources?" And they couldn't even understand what I was saying. Now, who is most fit for a job? Someone who comes over here from another country and can't speak English and gets a job and is illegal? Or someone who's had maybe some missed -- some bad decision-making and did wrong and would like to start at ground level and get a job? A strike or an illegal person? Can you address that to me?
Thank you very much for your public comment. Appreciate that. That closes our general public comment for today. Madam Clerk, if you can run through the agenda.
Item number one on the agenda is a continued consideration of the Maris Vito message.
Okay. I believe that there is a desire to receive and file that today? No? Okay. We'll move to receive and file that. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. The orders on those go over to May 8th.
Okay. Because of fewer than 12 members, those ordinances will be carried over for one week. Next items, please.
Next items are items where public hearings have been held. Items 9 through 11 are commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold them.
And then on item number 12, there's a request to continue that matter for one week to May 8th.
Okay, without objection, colleagues. Continue that one week.
And that will leave you for Council 13 through 46 -- excuse me, 13 through 47, and on 46 and 47, there are two reports on the file.
Okay. Colleagues, specials, these are 13 through 47. Specials, Mr. Reyes.
4, please.
Out of 24 for Mr. Reyes. Mr. Parks?
We have the treasurer's report, 17, 18, 19, special, and then on 46, if we could just hold that on the desk, we're waiting for an amended motion.
Okay. 46, 17, 18, and 19. Does anybody want to move one of the committee reports on 47?
33.
We've got 33 as well. Does anybody -- oh, actually, you don't want that continued? We have a note to continue that to the second.
33.
Nope. Okay. We will call it special. Ms. Han, and 47.
7, move the budget finance report.
And Mr. Parks, move the budget finance on 47. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Let's go ahead and open the roll.
We're not there yet.
We are on 35.
Oh, 35 for --
Because of fewer than 12 members, those ordinances will be carried over for one week. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held. Items nine through 11 are commissioners. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold them.
And then on item number 12, there's a request to continue that matter for one week to May 8th.
Okay, without objection, colleagues. Continue that one week.
And that will leave you for Council 13 through 46, excuse me, 13 through 47. And on 46 and 47, there are two reports on the file.
Okay. Colleagues, specials, these are 13 through 47. Specials, Mr. Reyes.
Four, please.
Item 24 for Mr. Reyes. Mr. Parks?
We have the treasurer's report, 17, 18, 19, special, and then on 46, if we could just hold that on the desk, we're waiting for an amended motion.
Okay. Forty-six, 17, 18, and 19. Does anybody want to move one of the committee reports on 47?
Thirty-three.
We've got 33 as well. Does anybody, oh, actually, you don't want that continued? We have a note to continue that to the second.
Thirty-three.
Nope. Okay. We will call it special. Ms. Hahn, and 47?
Seven, move the budget finance report.
And Mr. Parks, move the budget finance on 47. Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? Let's go ahead and open the roll.
We're not there yet.
We are on 35.
Oh, 35 for Councilmember Wezar.
Okay. Mr. Wezar, item 35. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved, with the exception of 13, which will carry over one week as an ordinance as well. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 48 through 59, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have not had a public hearing. I have no cards on those, so we will open and close the public hearing. Any specials, colleagues? Ms. Hahn?
I wanted to say that we have a substitute motion for 52, technical amendment.
Okay. Has that been circulated, or you want to call it special?
It's being circulated right now.
Okay. We'll call it special, awaiting that. Anybody?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. President, on item 53B, that matter can be received in files. Item 60 can be adopted in lieu of that, and that's on the supplemental agenda.
Okay. Go ahead, we'll move receiving file 53B. Any other specials? Mr. Parks?
Yes, 54 and 59, we'd ask that on 59, if we could take it out of order as soon as Dr. Magna Bosco arrives from LMU.
All right. Take those right after the commissioners, without objection. Any other specials? If not, let's open the roll on the ballot.
Excuse me, and, Mr. President, there is a card that's just being submitted on item 48.
On 48, okay. Call that special for a card from the public. And on the rest, let's go ahead, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Supplemental agenda, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 60 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Seeing no objection, we will consider that. And item number 60 has no public speaker card, so we'll open and close that public hearing. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. If we can take the commissioners first, and then Mr. Parks, ask 59 out of order, but if I can ask our commissioners to come forward. Yep, the three of them. I'd like to recognize the chair of our HCD committee for these fine nominees, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. This morning, the committee that I'm fortunate enough to chair had an opportunity to ask questions of these individuals. Ones are reappointments, and I think two are new appointments. I can say with all confidence that the committee was impressed and would highly recommend that we move forward with the confirmation of these three individuals. You know, in life, it's always just a handful of people that recognize the fact that they have a responsibility to their communities and a responsibility to the city in which they live. And when we find qualified, committed individuals that know that this is their responsibility, I think we should reward them with the opportunity to serve. Being a public servant is critical. It's not what post you serve in, it's just that you serve. And I think that we should also afford them the opportunity to feel some of the stress and strain that we feel on a regular basis. But anyway, as chair, I highly recommend, I, it would be very difficult for us to find individuals more qualified.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker. I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes at this time.
Thank you, Council President. I first want to congratulate and thank all three of you for all the hard work you've demonstrated over the years. As I shared in committee, I think I've worked with each and one, every one of you, in different capacities through our careers. I don't say how many years, how far back we go, but the fact is, as of late, there's been tension out there about this discussion of how do we save industrial land, where do you allow housing to be built, where does commercial mixed use fit in in light of the dwindling industrial base? It's no secret that there is this sense that we are losing it. And as I stated in committee, I wanted to ask you if, in your position and working with entities like the Department of Water and Power, where they have an objective to expand solar energy as we look at alternative means of creating energy, we have the port that's dealing with issues of how we lower the contamination levels and what industries can we actually stimulate to provide a different way in which we look at our economy, given that this world is flattening, the technology, many of our resources, many of our businesses, even in the technological field, are coming from other parts of the world because we've become that efficient in our technology. So recreating ourselves and re-stimulating economies, I think, is going to be a challenge for us, but also understanding that we have the ability to identify industries that are compatible with residential and commercial areas. And so my question to you, as I've asked in committee, how do you see your role in being able to bring together these different forces, if you will? You have LEDC out there advocating for the city, creating jobs. You have the chambers who are fighting to make sure we are a business-friendly city, yet we're pushing hard to figure out where we can build housing. So this notion of being compatible, where one should not be mutually exclusive of the other, can you just talk to how you might address those issues in your position?
Ren Blight, I think you're absolutely right, Mr. Counsel, in the city in general, and certainly in the Industrial Development Authority, needs to work smarter in terms of going out to encourage new industries, certainly green industries, industries that are not so land extensive, and also industries certainly that don't have compatibility problems with their neighbors, especially residential neighbors. So the city has a challenge to go after certain kinds of industries and perhaps encourage other industries to move out to places where they have less conflict with their neighbors. We're working on that. Certainly, we have a staff at CDD who are aware of that and creating some strategies and policies for us. Your comment about water and power and the port, I think, is important. We've worked with them in the past, but I think it's a good time now to go back and regroup with them to see how we can work better together to coordinate our programs.
Any other comments?
Well, Councilman, I think you bring up a very good point about the conversation the city's been having.
Would you just identify yourself for the record?
Bishu, about the important conversation the city's been having recently about industrial lands and, you know, the debate between preserving lands for job creation and the, you know, market-driven desire to do housing on those lands. And I think actually, as, the IDA has a really unique opportunity to bring a tool to the table to not only play a defensive role against how do we preserve land for job creation, but how do we also offer a tool for that growth of job creation in industrial lands? So I think you raise a very important point and look forward to working with the board on it.
We're not a similar. I think, as Ren mentioned in committee today, two of the things that the IDA is going to be focused on is raising the cap in terms of the amount of money that can be lent to industrial organizations. Right now, we have a very strong pipeline of 501(c)(3), but not the traditional industrial type of industry. And part of that requires also an expansion of the definition at a level of what an industrial company is. And I think if we were successful in doing those two things, that it could be an even more powerful tool to be able to go after environmental technologies, sort of the green industries, to be able to have them stay and expand in areas of Los Angeles. And I think also working with the planning department and your committee in terms of the policy objectives, in terms of what industrial land stays industrial, what's appropriate for mixed use, and what's appropriate for housing, is going to be an important debate as we continue to serve in this capacity as IDA commissioners.
And by way, Council President, I do want to ask that, is it possible, maybe in three or six months, that we can identify a list of industries that we know are out there, markets that deal with environmentally friendly products, green-friendly type of facilities, that perhaps we could start courting in light of the fact that we've got this big push from the LEDCs of the world to create jobs and preserving industrial base, but to actually start looking at these blends, looking at how we can essentially create these types of environments where we can achieve compatibility? Is that something that, is that a product that can come from your particular body?
Yes, I believe we can work through the staff at CDD and pull together such a list. We need to work, I think, as you mentioned, with water and power, some of the other city departments, the mayor's office, development. But yes, we'll do that. You want it back in three months, six months?
In three months, if it's possible. The sooner the better, so that as we go through our community plan process, certain areas are being reconsidered for zoning changes and what that means to existing owners versus the environment can create. Perhaps having that type of list gives it much more substance as opposed to just kind of like planning out in a bubble, if you will, without any real feet to the ground and actually touching bases with the folks that get impacted the most, which are the property owners and the different stakeholders who are going through this change. And it's again, mind that we've grassled in the trenches and in the mud every once in a while in our careers, I think that's all that means in engaging that process. But perhaps it's a motion we can put together, but if you can just start, you know, time is very crucial, as you know, it goes by real fast. If we can address this, I think it would perhaps alleviate some of that pressure, some of that tension we have right now. But appreciate all your hard work and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And colleagues, if you indulge me from the chair, this is definitely the A-team. I was very happy to make these appointments, reappointment with Mr. Blight. And I think you all know the work of Ms. Chu and Ms. Simro in these chambers, and it's a great joy to have you being willing to serve for the Industrial Development Authority, and very much look forward to you becoming full commissioner. So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Congratulations. A round of applause to our commissioners. And if there's no objection, Mr. Parks asks for number 59 out of order, seeing none. Recognize Mr. Parks with item number 59.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Dr. Jennifer Magna Bosco and her researcher, Stephen Nuno, and also Mr. Mack to come up to the table. And for colleagues, there's documents that are being passed out as a part of the doctor's presentation. The reason that this motion was put together is that myself and Jan Perry have been giving, given a number of calls from the community, asking us questions that we couldn't ask as to what the process was going to be to reappoint the chief of police. They commented that there was not an official document that reflected what the criteria was going to be and what the process was going to be. And then I received some phone calls about, it appeared to be a foregone conclusion because there were comments made that it would be within a 30-day period, even though the community knew that it was the charter gate, a much longer period of time. And then the LMU came out with a poll that pretty much gave some indication that although there may be some consensus amongst elected officials and public officials, it appeared that the community at large, particularly communities of color, had a completely different view than the sentiments that were being expressed in the paper. So we thought it'd be important, number one, to share the LMU poll, particularly now that it's completed. I think there were some preliminary statements made in the paper about the preliminary draft. It is now a completed poll, and I think, what I think is relevant about their material is that it's updated, it's accurate, and it gives us some indication as to what the community sentiment is, the very people that receive the service from the Los Angeles Police Department. And Dr., let me, Dr., let me ask you to start off. Maybe you can give just the council a brief understanding of what your center does and what you've done in the past as it relates to the kind of studies you've done.
Sure. Good morning. Hi, I'm Dr. Jennifer Magna Bosco, and I'm here with my colleague, Stephen Nuno. We're both from the Thomas and Dorothy Levy Center for the Study of Los Angeles. I'm associate director and senior research associate, and Stephen is research associate. I'm not sure if everybody has the handouts that we've prepared. I think Mike is passing them around. We've prepared a full presentation in slide format for you so that you can follow along. While they're being passed out, let me tell you a little bit about the Thomas and Dorothy Levy Center for the Study of Los Angeles. We've been in existence for 10 years, so we are an undergraduate research center that focuses on urban studies and social justice needs for the city of Los Angeles. We've become a respected source of information and analysis. We're a regular convenor of government and community stakeholders, students, faculty, and the community at large, and we're a regular discussion of critical issues that face Southern California and their potential solutions. We've been doing research in this area for the past 10 years. The information that we're going to present today is actually a part of a longitudinal study that we're doing as part of the follow-up to the LA riots that occurred in 1992. We did three surveys, one in 1997, one in 2002, and the current one, 2007, we just completed during this year, during the months of March and April. All the surveys that we've conducted have been conducted with a random sample. They have been both ethnically and geographically representative of the city of Los Angeles. And so they are surveys of residents of Los Angeles, not government leaders. The information we're going to be presenting today is mainly going to be focused on the 2007 survey, but we will share with you some trend data. Just to give you a little idea of some of the survey question categories that we were surveying, one group, race and ethnic relations, another group of questions, government and community relations, including LAPD and chief of police reappointment questions. And those are the questions we're going to focus on today. We also did some surveying on immigration and social class, American dream, and demographics. So that just gives you an idea of the range of topics that the surveys have covered. Does everybody have the handout now? You do? Okay, great. Okay, so if you want to turn to slide number four, that's going to actually start the official presentation of our final results that have to do with LAPD performance and police chief reappointment, rehiring questions. I'm going to give you just a really brief overview of the main results, and then my colleague, Stephen Nuno, is going to take you through tables and more detailed results. Just a few bullet points about what the survey actually showed with regards to police chief reappointment of William Bratton and other police chiefs that we've had here in LA, and also what residents think of LAPD performance. In years 2007, 2002, and 1997, residents gave the LAPD performance a good to excellent rating. So that's been a very consistent rating over the years. When we surveyed them about certain LAPD reform practices, through the four practices that we researched, had a more effective rating in 2002 versus 2007.
Fair to ask you right there. So on that slide, it wasn't clear what you were asking, it just had the percentages. This is the percentage of people who affirm something positive?
Right. Which slide is that that you're looking at?
Slide eight.
Slide eight, right. Stephen Nuno will take us through that in particulars.
Okay.
So if we could just wait for just a second, he will then, you know, go through that in detail. Then let me just finish the last result overview. Support for police chief reappointment and rehiring. There was a higher rating for reappointment of Chief Bratton in 2007 versus Chief Parks in 2002, and the rehiring of Chief Williams in 1997. The final results of the 2007 survey show that 56% of all Angelinos support the reappointment of Chief Bratton in 2007. And then what Councilman Parks had been referring to in his introductory speech, there is variation in ethnic group support for the reappointment of Chief Bratton in 2007, and Stephen Nuno will take you through that in detail. Just a really quick overview of who the residents were whom we surveyed, and please remember, this was a random and ethnically and geographically representative sample of the city of Los Angeles. If you turn to slide five, that lists some of the main demographic characteristics that we surveyed. 27% were college graduates. These are the most prevalent categories of demographics, actually, that we're reporting, just to give you an idea. Age, 21% were aged 45 to 54. 41% had a household income under $4,000. 41% had a household income under $40,000. With regards to citizenship, 53% of the sample was US-born, 23% was naturalized, and 22% is non-citizens. The main religion that folks were practicing was Catholic. 52% of the sample was female. With regards to ethnicity, 42% were Latino, 34% were white, 14% were Korean, and 8% were African-American. With regards to political party, 37% were Democrat and 16% were Republican. And with regards to political direction, 29% indicated that they were middle-of-the-road. So that's just to give you an idea of who was involved in the sample as representative of the city of Los Angeles. Okay, so now I'm going to turn the mic over to my colleague Stephen Nuno. We're now on slide six, and he's going to take you through a detailed explanation of the tables there.
Hi, thank you for having me. The first slide, slide six, is a combination of the three surveys that were taken in 1997, 2002, and 2007. And the question reads, now I'd like to talk about the Los Angeles Police Department in general. Do you think the LAPD is doing an excellent, good, poor, or very poor job? And the results are that the overwhelming majority think that the LAPD has done either an excellent or a good job, and this suggests high institutional support for the Los Angeles Police Department. Slide seven is the surveys of 2002 and 2007. And this one seeks to explore the grading of reform practices of the Los Angeles Police Department since the 1992 Los Angeles riots. The question reads, next, I'm going to read several practices the LAPD has been working to improve since the LA riots in 1992. I'd like you to tell me how effective you think each practice has been in reforming LAPD since 1992. Here's the first practice, and then each practice is read to the respondent and asks, do you think this practice has been very effective, somewhat effective, or not at all effective in improving the LAPD? The following slide is the percentages of those who answered very effectively. And this is in the 2002 and 2007 results. And the first group of bar graphs on the left is the question of improving recruitment. 54% thought they were very effective in 2002 and 34% in 2007. That same pattern holds for imposing discipline and civilian review. However, community policing is statistically not, they're not, they're not different.
And President Garcia, did you have a question about slide eight?
I think I worked it out, but I assume it's something like the percentage believing that there's been improvement in those areas. It just wasn't clear what the percentage was for, just that categories of improvement.
All the percentages have to do with the percentage of all Angelinos surveyed in this particular survey.
That believe that there's been positive movement in those areas? Because it could be negative, it could be positive, it could be anything. It just has the percentage in a category like civilian review.
These are, these are the people that believe that the practice has been very effective since...
Okay. Thank you. That's all that was missing.
Slide nine is the results from 1997, 2002, and 2007 surveys. The questions, the question in 1997 was a little bit different because of the timing of the hiring or the denial of Chief Willie Williams. The question for Chief Bratton and Chief Parks was, as you may know, the first five-year term of Police Chief William Bratton and Bernard Parks is almost over. Based on what you know, do you support or oppose the reappointment of William Bratton or Chief Parks for a second term? The question for Chief Willie Williams was a little different because of the timing again. And the question reads, as you may know, the five-member panel of the city's police commission unanimously voted not to rehire Willie Williams as police chief. Based on what you know, do you agree or disagree with police commission's decision not to rehire Police Chief Williams? And we took that for those who agreed with the decision to not support Willie Williams and those who disagreed with the decision to support Williams so that we can get some continuity between the three chiefs. 1997, there was...
Sorry, so just to be clear on that one, so it's not that they support the decision, it's the opposite, that they supported Chief Williams?
Right. So it's kind of a negative because of the timing of when the surveys were taken. So support are the dark bars and oppose are the light bars. In 1997, 40% and 37% for Chief Williams. 43% support versus 34% oppose for Chief Parks. And Chief Bratton, 56% support and 20% oppose, or oppose, rehiring of Chief Bratton. Slide 10, we broke these numbers down, that previous slide. Slide nine was for all Angelinos. Slide 10 breaks down that same question for Chief Bratton by ethnicity. And so the question is the same, and the, there is a variation amongst the different ethnicities. African-Americans dropped to 48% support, 33% opposed. Koreans, these are Koreans only, drop to 48% support and only 12% opposed. Whites have the highest support for Chief Bratton, 69%, and 12% oppose. And Latinos, 50% support Chief Bratton and 26% oppose Chief Bratton. I'd like to note that the margin of error is a little bit higher when we're talking about subgroups as opposed to Los Angeles in general. And the margin of error is down at the bottom.
So that concludes the formal presentation of the questions here. So we're really open for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. The issues that I think the article pointed out was the greatest concern to me is slide eight and then slide 10. And when we look at the issues on slide eight, these are the kinds of issues that I think minority communities have probably been on the forefront in talking about discipline, accountability, civilian review, and to some degree, community policing. Yet, when we look at those, not a small percentage drop, but in all instances, we're talking at least the first three categories, double-digit drop, which would be of great concern to communities I represent, particularly when their numbers on slide 10 are not overwhelmingly in support. And I'm just wondering if there's any side questions that indicate if that's what drove their impressions of these three items where there's significant dropage? Are there other indicators as to why they were not as high as, say, the white population?
Initially, no, there are no indications. We have, we have time. Initially, there are, there are, there are, I'm going to say, no, there are no indications as to why that may be different, other than, other than that African-Americans, as African-Americans seem to have lower support for Chief Bratton.
Did that correlate with the relationship of the department's performance in the earlier chart? Are they similar?
Support for Chief, support for LAPD seems to be high amongst all ethnicities. The political position of Chief Bratton seems to be taking a greater hit than the institution of Los Angeles Police Department.
But again, was there any questions that identified where minority groups on slide 10 came out on the discipline and reform as it relates to civilian review? Any sense of that?
Give me a second, I'll take a look.
I also think what you're asking, Councilman Parks, is some of the future research that we're actually going to start. All of this research, we just actually finished completing this kind of final analysis within the last week. And so you had mentioned correlations and other kinds of data analysis that we will be embarking upon, looking for further relationships between all of the questions and variables that we, you know, have studied.
Initially, it seems as though Anglos or whites...
Speak into the mic.
Initially, it seems as though Anglos or whites are answering somewhat effective and very effective, more so than are African-Americans and Latinos.
And then let me ask you, when you set up the polling for 97, 02, and 07, are the questions identical, so you can make the comparison?
For 2002 and 2007, they're, they're exactly alike.
What's the benefit of having the identical questions?
With the identical questions, we can, we can reduce the amount of bias that the audience in the questions, every survey introduces bias in questions. And by having the similar question in 2002 and 2007, we've reduced the amount of bias in the questions. So we can have a compatible response rate between the two groups for that same question.
In addition to reducing the bias, do you have the ability, if you came up with a new question, to make any comparative analysis from previous years if the questions were not identical or very similar?
No, I do not, no, we do not have similar questions to that.
Now, another thing I was wondering on the survey, these questions that you gave us, are there some sub-questions that get more specific where different groups' sentiments are?
With more detailed analysis, we can look at geographic location as opposed to ethnicity and see if geographic location has an impact on how they answer the question as well.
Is it geographic, like zip code or...?
Census track.
Census track.
So there's not an actual question, but what happens is in our analyses, we can then get down to a zip code level and look at other kinds of variations.
And we don't have that now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Weiss and then Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the commission president if he could to walk us through the process that the commission is following in consideration of this matter.
Hold my time.
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. President, I send a message to the council. The, first of all, I have a couple of handouts too that I'd like to pass around.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask, we could just allow the commission president to present to the council as long as he wants on the entire topic.
Sure, you can.
Two documents.
It'll be held, don't worry.
Thank you. The two documents have, having distributed, relate to evaluation criteria that the commission has utilized that was distributed last night at our public hearing. And one relates to the commission's evaluation criteria that was established, adopted by the prior commission in 2002. And the second involves a citizens, what was billed as a blue-ribbon citizens panel that was appointed by the prior mayor when the process was beginning to unfold to determine the leadership attributes that the next chief of police should possess. First of all, let me just, if you don't mind, I'll just comment briefly running the poll, and I'm just seeing this completed version this morning. It comes as no surprise to me, and I doubt it comes as a surprise to very many other people, that there would be a gap in terms of the overall acceptance, support for any chief, given the longstanding history between, where it's existed. All too often in the past, a very hostile and tense relationship between, too many within LAPD and members of communities of color, particularly the African-American community. Then when you add on to that, you know, when you have a situation when, generally speaking historically, there's been a user-friendly relationship between the police department and the white majority community, and a, in the past, all too often, a not-so-friendly relationship that happens, and you throw into that high-profile incidents that come along, and that also, I think, creates a big-time hit. But more directly in response to your question, first of all, this commission is using and taking very seriously these two documents as we go through our evaluation process. One, I'll just briefly highlight the evaluation criteria for the chief of police. I'll just mention the categories that we are looking at: visionary leadership, civilian oversight, community policing, crime reduction strategies, police misconduct and reform, diversity, cultural competence. And then the blue-ribbon committee had also outlined some other significant competencies that they envisioned, as well as some criteria. We have, we held last night, I would imagine that all of you would know by now, so I hope that each of you had received a direct communication. We did hold a public hearing last night at the Department of Water and Power, and we had, I think, a good turnout, people. And they, were people who expressed both pro and con sentiments regarding Chief Bratton's reappointment. And there's been a question raised regarding the extent of the outreach. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about that. In anticipation, in preparation for this public hearing, the commission distributed a communication from me along with a press release inviting people to come and participate. Over 550 notifications were sent to media outlets throughout the city, and we were particularly sensitive to making sure that we didn't just stop with the so-called mainstream media, but we're very careful to make sure that media and various minority communities, both print and electronic, radio, television, were informed of this. But we didn't stop with just the media, the community advisory boards, various organizations and institutions that are active throughout the city. And again, we were particularly, and I personally spent a great deal of time with our staff to make sure that individuals and organizations who are active in communities of color knew about this event and would have an opportunity to come and express themselves. In addition to the commission's outreach, LAPD itself reached out to over 1,150 organizations and individuals who are under the department's notification. And of course, this is far and wide, all kinds of groups, and not just people who are cheerleaders of LAPD, but individuals and organizations who are strong critics of the, of the organization. In addition to that, information was put on the department's website as well as the media advisors. We also just, we've received letters from many, many people. At this stage in the game, I've lost count because they're still coming in, but I'm sure we received, at this stage, as of last night, we had received easily 70, 80 letters. And let's give you a small sampling of some of the people who communicated to us. The Senator Margaret Thomas, Bishop Charles Blake, Central City Association, Senator Alex Fadilla, James Butts, the Deputy Executive Director of LAX, former police chief of Santa Monica, Barrett Taylor, President of the Los Angeles Urban League, Ramona Ripston, ACLU, and a number of law enforcement officials, LA County DA Steve Cooley, and Merrick Bob, Blenke Rodriguez, Eli Brode, Sheriff Lee Baca, Jim Wyatt, Vice Chairman of the Police Foundation, Juan Christopher, LA Chamber of Commerce, Percy Paintman, Black Political Association, letter goes on and on. We received, to be accurate, a total of 90 letters and 80 emails, 88 in support, 2 opposed. And they represented right cross-section. But aside from this hearing last night, this is not the first time. I would want to emphasize, you know, that... you know, that we've reached out to the public and/or that this Commission has tried to be very thorough in this process. Over the course of the past months, we've held three community outreach meetings in council-matic districts, one in the eighth district hosted by Councilmember Parks, another in Councilmember Rosenthal's district, another in Councilmember Rindelgruul's district. And we have a process on a quarterly basis where we move around, and I would take this opportunity to express our desire to have others of you to host. And during this process, we hear, in these meetings, we've been very careful, and I've been very careful, to make sure we're not talking at people, that most of the time is devoted to hearing from the community, from the public, their input, their attitudes, their opinions, both by LAPD and about the chief. I mean, you name it, you know, there are no limits on what they can say. And I also, I think it's important for the Council to understand that we, our Commission just went through a very, very comprehensive annual performance evaluation with Chief William Bratton. It was completed in January of two thousand and seven. And while, as all of you know, I can't get into specifics because of, you know, his personnel rights that are protected by law, but it was a very thorough one, and it wasn't just a love-in. We looked at those areas where we felt performance was exceptional and outstanding, and areas where we felt improvement needed to be made. Some people may not believe it, but this Commission is not a rubber stamp. In addition to that annual performance evaluation that was conducted, we also have a process in place in which, on a quarterly basis, the full Commission meets with the chief to do a progress, a status report in terms of the goals. As a part of that evaluation, I should point out, goals were established. And we sit down, we sit down and do a checkpoint in terms of where we are. And we have one plan in the future. And another, and I'm just touching upon a few highlights, and in addition to that, there've been a number of community meetings in which the chief and I and other members of the department have met, particularly folks in South LA, given the history of some of the issues that we faced there. And I would just conclude at this point by also making a, hopefully to you, an obvious point. No question about it, we have a, we're very sensitive, and I personally am extremely sensitive to the relationship and to the perception and the attitudes that communities of color possess and feel toward LAPD and toward the department. Thirty-seven years I was an advocate on the other side. I'm aware of a number of these issues. I'm also, having been in this, and now I'm aware of where progress has been made and where we still need to go. So we have a high degree of sensitivity and respect in that regard. But we also cannot operate in denial, and we cannot, we cannot remain locked in a time warp in which, I mean, there are some people here, some people would say no progress has been made, and that is just factually not correct. We still have a long way to go, but we, this Commission has been very serious about supporting LAPD, supporting the chief where it needs to be done, but also holding accountability. And I would just close these comments by pointing out to you that as important, important as community input is, it's really just one aspect, one aspect of this evaluation process. And with all due respect, our decision cannot be based entirely upon community input. We have to take a whole totality of circumstances into account, including community input, but also looking at these criteria and looking at the overall situation.
Commission President, I had a number of questions for you this morning. You've answered every single one of them in your presentation. And I'll just repeat what I said last night. I literally, the police commission that Secretary Christopher and the other members of his panel were thinking about fifteen years ago when they wrote that report. You are doing a superb job, and I know each and every one of you on this Commission quite well. You are strong, you are independent, you don't take guff from anybody, including and especially people who wear uniforms in the LAPD. And I appreciate the manner in which you have conducted the evaluation of the chief's application for reappointment. Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Our next speaker is Ms. Perry and then Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think we can all agree that the LAPD has much improved over the past decade. I think that we can all agree that the relationship that the department has with the community has much improved. You can see that when you go out to community meetings, at the participation, the turnout, the interest that goes both ways, and the relationships that people have with their senior lead officers, and I think that's pretty obvious. And I appreciate saying that in public, and I have no problem saying that, but I do think we need to get past that climate where people can't ask questions without, you know, basically pissing somebody off. Because the people we answer to are the people who are living in the communities, and so it's in that spirit, without respect to criticizing someone or affirming someone, we ask these questions on behalf of the people that we represent. And I know that each one of us, as elected officials, sometimes we sit in these chairs and we think, God, you know, this is really uncomfortable, this is really painful, I don't like it, but unfortunately, you know, that's democracy. And it's people's right to exercise their desire to speak freely. And with that, I want to ask a question about crime reduction strategies. And the reason I ask that, without regard to the individual or the Commission, is because in Seventy-seventh and in Newton, we still have the highest rate of homicide in the city. I had a conversation with Connie Rice the other day about her study, and some of it I agreed with, some of it I didn't agree with. But the thing which I was most interested in, a term she calls violence interruption, that ties into how you prevent someone when they're at the point where they're ready to go out and commit an act of violence. And I can think of any number of murders that have taken place in my district where, when you look back and do an analysis of what happened, I can press my button again if I need to, Mr. President.
That's the minute.
That you find somebody who knew that those individuals were going to go out and basically kill somebody. And so we talked a little bit about that. What I am very interested in, in your analysis and doing the review, one, what's your, what information have you gathered about violence interruption strategies that have been employed in the last year or so? And also, on deployment, and what's the quickest way for us in the South Bureau to enhance our deployment and to get more officers out in the street as quickly as possible, given our budget situation? What basically, what options do we have that are not impactful from a fiscal perspective? Maybe we can make some adjustments without having too much of a fiscal impact? And if the rest of the city doesn't agree with us, that's fine, but if there's something that we can do through the chief, for the South Bureau in particular, because of the high rate of homicide, I'd be very interested in hearing that. So that's two questions, rapid, non-fiscal options to enhance deployment. And then the second point is violence interruption strategies that have been employed to prevent violent crime, once we have the intelligence to know that it may be on the cusp of occurring.
First of all, Councilmember, it's hard to completely disregard fiscal implications, but I'll.
Give it a try.
But I'll give it a try. Let me just deal with the second question first in terms of the department. One of the, one of the chief's practices and policies has been, with some Commission support, is to really deploy resources in the areas, you know, where there is greatest, where we have greatest degree of crime and violence. And we understand, certainly, I, you know, I personally understand, and Chief Bratton and he does too, that this doesn't make everybody happy, you know, because if you deploy, quote, disproportionately in one part of the city, then you have a whole bunch of people unhappy in other parts of the city. But there has been a strong commitment to deploy the major sources of resources, you know, where the greatest problems of violence and crimes, and as we all know, certainly, you know, murders and that kind of violent crime has been disproportionately high in South LA. And as I'm sure you're aware, just look at this gang issue, which is one that's really a major, major problem. The recent, the recent decision to target, you know, the ten, or so, ten or twelve most violent crimes, gangs and graffiti leadership, and that indeed is being implemented. So I think from our standpoint, as relation to deployment, clearly, the Commission and the chief leadership department are committed to making sure that we target, you have highest priority, to the areas where you have the greatest crime problem, violent crime problem in particular. Of course, recently, in addition to South LA, you know, we've had a spike in the gang activity out in the Valley, which is another area that where there's been a major. Regarding your first question in terms of intervention before, let me make sure I understand the question.
Violence interruption, you know, I think everybody agrees that we need to do more for gang diversion, gang intervention, and then in that continuum, suppression, when, you know, other strategies have failed, and obviously, we need to be more coordinated as a city and be more efficient in the way that we use our resources. But what I felt the report was lacking, and what I think is lacking in this discussion, and that people tend to gloss over, and I don't know why, is when you get out the other end of the pipeline, and somebody gets killed, and what I'm saying is, for South Bureau, for Parks, for me, for Mr. Wesson, we have, still have the highest rate of homicide in the entire city, some of the most egregious homicides in the entire city. And, you know, so this is not about criticizing someone, we're trying to respond to an issue that is real and actually has, there's a gap in our logic somewhere. There's a gap in our logic in what we're doing and how that translates out into these communities. Because when you look back at a lot of the shootings that have occurred, in most cases, if you talk to people in the community, and if we are close enough to them, they're always preceded by conversations or tension or something that's going on in the community. Or you look back and you go like, oh, yeah, I guess that shouldn't have been a surprise that that happened. In very few instances have we experienced homicides where, you know, it's completely random and completely out of the blue, you know? Usually when you look back at them, there's a relationship between someone who knows someone who had a conflict with someone, something like that. And so what I'm trying to get to is that piece of the continuum where we interrupt the violence in a proactive way to get ahead of someone before they commit an act. I can give you examples if you need them. No, I can give you an example, let me give you an example. There was a police chase, started in Seventy-seventh, maybe it was a year and a half, two years ago, came up Vermont, and you can go back and look at the records and look at the facts for some reason or other. There were several people involved, and I believe that one of the individuals who was aware of why these individuals were doing it, and it ended up by Vermont and Vernon, in a parking lot in front of a grocery store, where the truck ran into another structure, and that's, a lot of shots were fired. Somebody phoned in, someone who had been involved in that whole situation had phoned in and then were able to at least alert law enforcement so that they could mitigate the situation and that protect innocent people and basically kind of contain the situation in some ways, as more people could have been hurt. Now, that's just one example, I can give you more.
Well, you know, I think I understand the question. It seems to me that the, that issue, that challenge, while yes, there's a police role, but I think we're talking about responsibility going beyond LAPD now.
You know, there's an intelligence role, there is an awareness.
Yeah, well, all right, but it's an intelligence role, but it's beyond an LAPD. You talk about intelligence, how do police obtain intelligence? By having people communicate and share with them.
Because the relationships that we have with people.
And I know it gets back to community relationships, community policing, and that's, you know, well, what I'm suggesting is that we clearly, one of the, this gets to me, gets into one of the other important areas, I think that this is where the importance of our establishing better relationships between the Los Angeles Police Department and the community, i.e. the African-American community, the Latino community, so that we can hopefully get closer to developing relationships based upon, you know, mutual respect, based upon mutual trust, so that people can, so that when you go through this intelligence gathering process, when an incident is about to occur, there's a situation about to occur, as you described, that there'll be a greater willingness on the part of individuals to provide information can be useful before the fact, so that it could be.
Let me just say this, I'll press my button again if necessary.
Thank you.
There's a science to this, and talking about better relationships, that's nice and that's wonderful, but that's probably not enough because we constantly talk about having better.
But it's a part of the process.
Let me just finish. What I want to talk about, and maybe we can do it in this meeting, maybe we can't, is what strategies we can expect and ask the chief to help us to develop to deal with this issue of violence interruption and more effective deployment that has minimal fiscal impacts or less fiscal impact, something like that, so that we can have more help in the South Bureau, okay? So I'll stop for now, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal and Ms. Hahn are our next speakers, and then Mr. Parks for a second time. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Indeed, fifteen years after the riots, we're all reflecting on, have we made progress and if we have gone in the right direction? And frankly, I think this is good timing to have this discussion here. I second this motion to make the process, at least in this moment here, as clear and as transparent as we can, and for us as a council members to suggest to you, Mr. Mack, anything that we think would continue to open the process. You did mention that in my district, there's been interaction and input, and frankly, I think that this discussion is very healthy for all of us here. I'm going to move that we note and file this after this discussion, but giving you the tools and the energy from us as a council to continue your process of outreach, continue your process of involvement of community. The issues are big. I personally think Bratton is an incredibly good chief, and I would definitely, and will definitely vote for his reappointment to that position. But the discussion we're having here lets people really realize that it's a big deal for us, because we know how important the police are to protect and serve. My colleagues who have spoken about the issues in their areas are very real, but I know your leadership in the Commission is very thorough on it. Again, to one question, how do you feel about the process at this point, the outreach at this point? Could you possibly hold another community meeting or so? And can we move forward with this and note and file?
Councilmember Rosenthal, at this point, my colleagues and I really, you know, we've had a discussion regarding the whole question of public hearings, and, you know, as a result, we felt first of all that we wanted to make absolutely sure that the public here held last night, that it was not a secret, that everybody, you know, that, you know, the word would go out widely, and that anyone who had an opinion, and all of our communication were careful not to influence people one way or the other, inviting people to come and express some. inviting people to, to come and express themselves pro or con. And that coupled with, you know, the, some of the other outreach that had taken place that, that I previously discussed, as a commission, we really just did not feel that it would be necessary for us to hold a whole series of public hearings throughout the city. We made this one, held the power of water and power, Park and was free, held it in the evening, so people who were working could come. And, you know, for all of those circumstances, our, our commission really at this point just is not inclined to hold the whole series of public hearings, or delay the process unduly. You know, a comment was made earlier about us rushing to judgment, it's not about rushing to judgment. You know, one of the other things that I've learned sometimes in a frustrating way is that we think decisions get made rather slowly, you know, around this place, and, you know, we, we're just not inclined to, to postpone this decision and just drag it out needlessly and endlessly. So I, I mean, maybe, maybe, obviously, there are others who may have a different opinion, but we're, we're just, at this stage in the game, do not feel we need to, to, you know, to just hold a whole series of additional public hearings. And then, in addition to hearings, you know, we've received quite a few other communications, and we still are open to, you know, hearing from anyone from the public who has a position one way or the other.
So you're still open for that, and we as a city council right now, in this dynamic, are the process people and the policymakers and people watching this and my colleagues interacting, to me, is a very healthy experiment.
And I would encourage, excuse me, I would encourage, by the way, anyone, please, anyone who's listening or watching, I would encourage them to let us hear from them. You know, contact the Police Commission office and we, and our executive director, Richard T. Fank, and our, and the staff will make sure that we, that information is made available to us immediately.
Thank you very much, and colleagues.
Thank you.
I do move that we note and file this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I agree with Councilmember Rosenthal that this is certainly, it's a good discussion. And while, I think I, I was actually one of the first elected officials to give my support for the reappointment of Chief Bratton, I also, you know, was on this motion to find out how we could make sure that before it became a done deal, you know, that we really reached out to the community. And John, I agree, you know, when I sit here and have, have watched you now and have watched you since you've become president of commission, you really are sort of the perfect person, you know, to, to be sitting in that commission spot because you have a real sensitivity to the issues that the community has had, is having, and will have in, in terms of its relationship with, with LAPD. I don't think anyone knows better than you do, you know, kind of where we've come, where we are now, and where we need to, where we need to go. And, you know, I, I feel pretty positive that Chief Bratton will get reappointed for, for another five years, but it's clear from the survey, it's, it's still clear from things that I hear, that there, there are still some issues the community has, there's still some problems that the community has, there's still some concerns the community has in terms of its relationship with LAPD, whether it's the command staff or whether it's the patrol officers. And I think, you know, my Watts Gang Task Force in Watts is, is a great example of a group of community members who have come together on a weekly basis and who started out a year ago with a very bad relationship with LAPD. And they and LAPD would probably have been the first ones to talk about it. It has absolutely turned around. In fact, last Friday night, you know, Channel Seven wanted to come out to Watts and interview the Watts Gang Task Force because we had a, a press release that said there had not been a homicide in Watts since February. You know, that is almost a miracle. And a lot of it, commanding officer of Southeast gave the credit to the community. And I gave the credit to the officers and the community because it's the first time I've really seen them working together for the first time and talking together and working, working on solving these problems together. LAPD can't do it alone, they know that, they need the community. The community, it's not a healthy place to be in, to be in a, in a divisive relationship with their, their officers, I think they know that. But, but even besides that, I think there, there, and I can't speak for all communities of color in terms of what they're feeling about LAPD, I can, I think I can speak for Watts because Watts has this amazing group of stakeholders from all walks of life, from the clergy to the schools, to the community activists, who really, I think if you interview them, would probably be very supportive of, of Chief Bratton and very supportive of their officers. But, you know, there's other communities who have concerns about, about deployment. There's other communities that have concern about, which is one of my biggest concerns, is this revolving door of commanding officers. In six years, colleagues, I don't know about you all, but I have two divisions, Southeast and Harbor, in six years, I've had ten commanding officers. I just went last night to say goodbye to Joan McNamara, fine captain, one of the best, you know, has been there less than two years, less than two years at Harbor Division. We now have someone new. And every time you get someone new as commanding officer, you know, you got to reintroduce them to the community, you got to reintroduce them to the community activists, you got to reintroduce them to, you know, the issues, the problems. And, you know, I've spoken to you about this, I, I have, I think LAPD has got to figure out another way to promote, another way to increase their salaries, another way to give them another title, besides having to move them and transfer them. Because I'm one of those that believes community-based policing is not just about your slows, it's about your command staff. It starts from the top. And I think LAPD's practice of promoting and transferring is an absolute detriment, and it undermines community-based policing. I've always believed that, I don't want to hurt anybody's career, but I think it's a problem. So there are other issues that I think, even if Chief Bratton, I think he will get reappointed, I think he needs to be able to hear from the community. So I guess what I'm, and I'm over, I guess what I'm asking is, I think before this vote is taken, I, I would like to see another round of community meetings. Maybe you have one commission meeting where, where the community come to again, or I would say, you know, talk to the CPABs, talk to, certainly, my Watts Gang Task Force deserves to be pulled in terms of the reappointment of Chief Bratton with an opportunity to not just say yes or no about the chief's reappointment, but to be able to freely say, here are the issues we still have with LAPD on a number of levels and a number of issues. It not, doesn't necessarily even have to be problems, just concerns and things we're wondering about, things that we think can be better, things that we think could be better in the relationship between LAPD and members of the community all over Los Angeles. So I, I would ask that before the final vote is taken, that we, we, we try a little bit harder to, to get the community's input, again, in a broad base, not just on the chief's reappointment, but let him hear again from the residents of Los Angeles on how we think as we move forward with gang violence and a number of other issues, we can work better with LAPD.
Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and, and, and members. I want to thank Councilmember Parks for bringing this motion today because I think that this council has had a very substantive discussion where it relates to our concerns, and that's a good thing. I'm glad that the people from LMU did this survey, and, and in my opinion, this survey shows some positive things. And again, I'm very sensitive to what John says because I've known him for a hundred years, and I don't think we could have had a better person in, in, in your position. I share a lot of the concerns that Ms. Perry mentioned and that Ms. Han mentioned, but for me, outreach, outreach and discussions with the community should be a forever thing. It shouldn't be a thing that we focus on just during the, the reappointment of the chief. I think that the commission has done a very good job, and again, I see improvement. What I would like to see is us to afford the community an opportunity to be engaged on a regular basis. And I think in the event that you, you do that, it would again, it would appear to me that the chief will be reappointed, but it appears to me that there are still concerns and questions in the community. And so that we should focus on continually affording them an opportunity to dialogue with us. So I'm not certain, I, I believe I heard my colleagues say that his motion is going to be to receive and file this motion, and I would be supportive of that, but I just want to put emphasis on that I think that it is important for us as we go forward. In fact, I'll say to even Mr. Parks, I could have supported something like this if we said the next time around, when we appoint a chief five years from now, that maybe you want to have a discussion about some of the guidelines that were put forward. But where it relates to today, at this point, and at this time, I would suggest that we would vote for, and hopefully, Mr. Parks is comfortable with that, with the recommendation by Councilmember Rosenthal, and that we would get a commitment from John, which I'm sure he has no problem in giving, that this will be a continual program outreach by the commission. Because when you do dialogue like this, I think that's when you see these numbers increase where supportive of the police department, supportive of the chief. And I think it's when you give individuals the opportunity to talk about what concerns them and that you, with earnest, vet those concerns and let them know that you've listened to them. So I would support Councilmember Rosenthal's motion with the verbal commitment from my friend, a man that we all respect, a man of honor, that as this moves forward, that you would try to broaden the discussion with the community.
Thank you, if, if I may, Mr. President, I absolutely, you know, fully, fully agree with, with, you know, your, and, and by the way, just, maybe I didn't point out before, but the commission is already committed to holding community, meetings in the community minimally on a quarterly basis. And we, and, and that's, that's something that frankly, I've been, been pretty adamant about with, with my colleagues and our staff, that we do that because it is important that we reach out and we constantly hear from, because, you know, the various issues that have been raised here today, you know, I, I mean, I personally agree with, you know, so it's not the foundation, my fellow commissioners are quite open to hearing, we don't want to become insulated and isolated, we want to make sure that we constantly hear from the members of the public. And as I said before, we, we certainly look forward to, in the, to move forward, various ones of you hosting meetings, I might, I wasn't going to say this, but I say, frankly, we were trying to get a host, we wanted to hold one tonight because we knew that it was going to be logistic, a logistical nightmare for people to get downtown today out in the community, but we were unable to get a taker, so I hope we can, one of you will agree to host one in the future. But yes, the concept, that idea is something that I fully agree with. You have my absolute commitment on that.
Thank you. We have three more speakers on the queues, colleagues, we've been on this for about one hour, and I want you to know that we have ten other special items, just as an FYI, ten other items that have been called special in a bear quorum, so just to be conscious of that as we are entering into our remarks. Mr. Reyes is next, Mr. Parks, and then Ms. Perry.
You know, colleagues, I do appreciate this discussion, and I know it's noted and filed, so that I would support as well, but it is incredibly significant that we at least are able to put out the kinds of concerns we do have, and we've been sharing that with you, Mr. Mack, and I want to thank you for your work. But quite frankly, there are institutional issues here that I believe will make any chief better. When you talk about, in my area, for instance, I have six divisions, not, not one, not two, not three, I have six. With all the changes that have been occurring, they occur in that level of, of not only frequency, but it is incredibly hard on the community to understand who's protecting them when you have that kind of number of divisions in one district. So how we approach that, I'm not sure if anyone wants to touch it because it means all the divisions start moving and it creates another uproar, and I'm not sure I'll ever get the support to address that, I've been addressing it for years. But when you look at Pico Union, Westlake, when you look at those areas that have gone through significant improvement, and when you look at what we went through during the riots, the major breakdown that still occurs today is the issue of communication. When we call in, when we call in to report a crime, we're put on hold twenty minutes, we're put on hold for a long amount of time. And we're spending millions of dollars to sit in public safety, we've got these new systems coming on board, but even when you reach an individual, the rudeness, or either they're tired, they're burned out, they don't want to speak to a person who is not speaking clearly in English, and how folks are treated is beyond me. I mean, if we were to make this a community service, a public service, uh, gauge, we would fail miserably given who is on the other side of that line when our community's called. So how we pay attention to that, how we improve that, is something that I, I believe is, is critical if we're going to talk about more confidence and a stronger relationship with the community, to support the chief and all the good work that's been done by the men and women of the blue. But those are fundamental issues that continues to escape us, and it's something I, I really believe we should try to focus on, is our ability to communicate with our communities at that basic level when you call emergency. And I appreciate all your hard work, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, next.
Thank you, Councilman, I agree, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mack, let me just clarify one thing, you mentioned that the eighth district hosted a meeting regarding the reappointment, I wasn't.
No, I, I didn't say reappointment.
Okay.
We hosted a meeting in the community, I was making the point that we.
I thought you said that I hosted it, and I just wanted to clarify that.
I mean, back in the fall, remember, meeting we held, not, not regarding the reappointment, it was a meeting in the community to hear from people about any subject.
Let me just, in dealing with that, I just want to comment on that meeting, that was a police commission meeting, and what the feedback was after the meeting was that it was there for about two and a half hours. The first two hours was the department making presentations, and the last half hour was the community given one or two minutes to speak with no response. And I think that's where the communication breaks down as it relates to reaching out and getting input. Let me just.
Well, Councilman, excuse me, I would, I would have to beg to differ that, we did not talk for two hours, the meeting was two and a half hours, but the majority of the time was spent listening to people.
But maybe that wasn't the meeting I attended, the meeting I attended was in the last half hour, and, and I think that was the one with the Mason Center. But let me just bring up a couple of things for colleagues, just for your information, everyone has made a comment about whether they'd vote for the chief's reappointment. You should be aware of, you don't get to vote on the chief's reappointment unless you two forty-five the commission's decision. And so had we not had this meeting today, there'd be no input whatsoever unless your offices had been contacted by the police commission for input about this process. My office was not, so maybe your. My office was not, so maybe your office was invited into the process. And so I think when looking at it, this is the only input you get to provide that, and it appears the process is about over. Mr. Mack, let me just throw out a couple of things that are, the community has brought up as inconsistencies in the process. One, you've given us two documents that reflect 2002 and 2003 evaluation criteria and a criteria for 2002, but yet for 2007, we did not get a criteria to determine what you're using for today's process. And I think that's.
Well, we used, we used the criteria that I distributed.
Okay, so you used a criteria from five years ago.
From 2000, the one that was the.
So 2003, the evaluation criteria, or 2002 was the Board of Police Commission. So in any instance, we're dealing with criteria.
Yes, we used the one that was adopted by the Police Commission, May 27, 2003, evaluation criteria for the Chief of Police. Yes, we did.
Okay.
And then that was also supplement, I might add, one other, we supplemented this, we had also received a communication from the mayor recommending some additional criteria that was also incorporated as part of that performance.
Did you say that something was published yesterday as a criteria?
I said this was distributed at the meeting last night.
Okay.
The public meeting.
What you've given us today.
Yes.
Okay. The other issue, when you comment about the historical perspective of the community as it relates to the relationship with the Police Department, that, that has been a tenuous issue in the community. But what is not explained is why we've had such a dropage in some of these perceptions over the last five years as it relates to the poll information. So there's been tenuous relationships, but really no explanation of why double-digit drops in several.
Well, we just saw the final poll this morning and, you know, we were going to take a look at it, and I haven't, you know, not in a position for the instant response for something we've just received.
No, I'm just saying, that would be, I hope, something that you would incorporate into your evaluation. The other issue is just for colleagues to be aware, the whole purpose of this meeting today and this motion was to allow us to have some input because the process is moving along. In fact, there was comments in the news where, I believe Mr. Mack commented, that we're going to be through within 30 days. And everyone has jumped on a bandwagon to say what they would vote for. The dilemma is the Council's been left out of that mix, and that's why we're here. The other thing I think that's very important and relevant is that although we have a very dynamic group of people that showed up yesterday, from the mayor to Warren Christopher and a variety of other people, Mr. Cooley, the dilemma that we run into is none of them have ever rioted in the city of L.A. The issue that we have to be concerned with are those numbers of those subgroups that express discontent. Those are the ones that if we bore discontent are the ones that will act out in the community. I don't know how many were available after the Devin Brown shooting to be in front of Bethlehem in church and see people just in complete outrage and looking to create a real disturbance over that shooting. Those are the people that we need to be addressing and those are the people that don't seem to get to these meetings.
Excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I was, when I was just given a brief overview of people who showed up, not just people who agreed with the reappointment of the chief. We had Representative Larry Aubrey and several Representatives of the Community Coalition who spoke in opposition to the chief's reappointment. We had members of L.A. canned, people active over in the Skid Row area, a number of speakers speaking in opposition to chief's appointment. We had several former gang members, Bowtail and several other gang members who, who were out there on the streets speaking in support of the chief's reappointment. So it wasn't just about high-level elected officials or prominent.
I was just commenting on the ones that you mentioned. But the other issue I'd like to bring up is that in looking at the criteria for 2003, two areas that I've concerned about, and I'm concerned about, when we mention crime reduction strategies, anytime this city or this department continues to report reduction beyond 2006, where the changes were made in the criteria, and compare it to any of the figures before 2006, we're leaving, we are actually misleading the public because we have altered the way crime stats have been dealt with since 2006, 2007, to go back and say that we are, as the mayor said in his State of the City, that we are, crime is down below the Eisenhower years, basically is a mislead of the public if we've not gone back and altered those decades of crime stats that are in place. And that's why I asked the question of the researchers about why you maintain a consistent question and answer as it relates to it. The other issue, and this is one that impacts the 8th and 9th District probably more than any other, in 2000, I believe, and six, we showed that there was over 6,000 complaints taken by the Police Department and only about 400 people were disciplined. This accountability or lack of is probably one of the largest issues in the community in that, that they can bring up as to relating to how they interact with the police, particularly when we know that the interpersonal relationship, the improper remarks, and those complaints have risen significantly, yet the response of the department has been minimal in their mind, or minimal to none. So if those two criteria are relevant, I think in dealing with the crime reduction and the police misconduct are two issues that appear, that need a great deal of attention. And colleagues, the purpose of bringing this is information because we don't get to have this input and we're not asking for any additional meetings. We hope Mr. Mack, in listening to this, would use his good judgment and conscience to figure out how they're going to address this. What I don't want to happen is that if something, as we've read all these articles about 15 years later in the, in the community and people are saying things have not changed much, we see this survey, if things should erupt in the city, we don't want people to say, "I wasn't aware, I didn't know." The whole purpose of this is bringing to the attention of those who are going to make the decision, because it's very unlikely we're going to have enough votes to 245 to have this input later. So the whole purpose of bringing it today is to have the input and hope that it's taken in the spirit of why it's given and hope that it will drive people to do the right thing, outreach to communities that have felt as though they're not a part of the process, people who can't get to downtown DWP at 6:00 in the afternoon or the evening, people where these issues occur out in the community. We've not had conflicts down at DWP, but we have had tremendous number in the communities and alleys and streets of South Los Angeles, East Los Angeles, where people who live there express themselves in a way that basically caused these kinds of disruptions. So that's, the purpose of it, hopefully is taken in the spirit that we're giving it. If you choose not to take it, we just want to make sure it's on record that it was presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do accept it in the spirit that's being given, Mr. Parks and members of the Council. Just because we mean algorithms, every single issue does not mean that some very important points have not been made, will be made, and I assure you that this Commission in doing its due diligence is going to be very mindful of the various concerns and issues that various ones of you have raised this morning, as well as issues that, you know, have been raised from many other corners. We don't have to, I think the one area where all of us are in agreement is that is we want to make sure that the Los Angeles Police Department does truly protect and serve and respect every part of this city and our diversified city, and that we have the right kind of leadership, leading that department in that direction. So I do, and I thank you for affording me the opportunity to come and listen, to hear from you and to express, you know, our thoughts.
I'd like to share with Mr. Mack an article that amplifies the issues about crime that you may find interesting.
Thank you. And Ms. Perry is our final speaker.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I'll just close with this. I wasn't asking for more community meetings. All I am asking is to put our few points on the record because I think that, that's our moral obligation to do so, and we all understand what the legislative process is. But I, I think it's imperative for those of us who represent those areas in the South Bureau to make the record that we raised the issue and we are asking for support and for response on the issue of violence interruption, separate and distinct from diversion, suppression, and intervention. I think those are all categories which we can all agree, we need to do a lot more work on. But again, I want to drill down on the numbers of, how do we get to the point where we can actually stop an action before it takes place? I want to drill down on the numbers of the list of the most dangerous gangs. I'm not interested in chasing after some tired, old, worn-out, sitting up in his recliner watching TV gangster, ex-gangster, somebody who's just sitting in the house. I want to talk to those people. I want to talk to the officers and the strategy, those people who are out there proactively threatening people, committing acts of terrorism here, right in our own city, not people who had warrants of an outstanding for years and they're just old and tired. Those people are easy to catch. Sometimes go to their house and get them, okay? Talking about the people who are running out there in street, okay? And I, and I am sorry if you, you know, if you are angry at what I asked today, but.
Councilwoman Perry, I'm not angry. You're trying to make me angry. I'm not angry.
No, I'm not trying to make you angry.
Your point is well taken and.
Mr. Mack, please let me finish. I am not trying to make you angry. I'm just trying to make a point. That's all. And all I'm trying to do is nothing more than that, okay?
Thank you. And I think regarding your point, I was going to say it's well taken, and I think that, in my opinion, what needs to be done, this is a very important subject that we need to have a subsequent conversation with involving some of the leadership within the LAPD to have additional discussion directly with you, you know, to see if we can't arrive at some mutual understanding.
Thank you. That is our, thank you. That is our last speaker. We've had a motion to, was it note and file or receiving file, I'm not clear? Receiving file was the first motion. All right, note and file then. And the second, Mr. Smith. So that'll be our first vote. We can go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That will be noted and filed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and thank you for the information from the study as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Next items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before that, if there's no objection on item 20, can we send that forth with, please? Next item.
Mr. President, Councilmember Parks called 17, 18, and 19 special. They're all Budget and Finance Committee reports and noted files.
Okay. Mr. Parks, we have items 17, 18, and 19. Okay, that's the treasurer to come up.
Joy, what I'd like you to do is to give the Council a brief overview of where we are as it relates to the financial health of the city, and then I'd like to just take a moment on item 19 and you comment on a variety of issues that were discussed in Council that also impacts the operation of your department.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Joy, I'm the fourth City Treasurer. I'm very pleased to report that we will be exceeding our revenue projections for the General Fund in this fiscal year by approximately, well, slightly over $2 million. We also took a look at the projections for fiscal year '07, '08, and there are two, we are now forecasting an additional $3 million for the General Fund. As far as some recent activities, we know it's a hard budget year this year and next year, so we have decided to take a look at how we do investing, and we are actually looking to take on a little more risk in the portfolio and with that achieve a substantial increase in earnings.
And then the other issue that, a couple items I think are important, you mentioned in committee to deal with how you're dealing with the bad check program and monitoring.
Well, I'm pleased to report there too that we have rolled out to the departments a bad check monitoring system. This is the system that the city currently uses from U.S. Bank. And each department that requests it is given administrator rights and they can go in and look at the entire database of those who have given the city bad checks, particularly those that are repeat offenders. But we thought it was more important too to, instead of being reactive and try to identify the offenders, that we work with departments to implement check verification systems. So the first department we're working with is Building and Safety, and when Building and Safety accepts a check, they'll be able to immediately verify whether it's a good check.
Okay. One thing that I think would be important for all Councilmembers is the recent report you had about how you're outreaching to banks or local banks for deposits, and that may be important to many of us.
Okay. A new bill signed by the governor effective January 1st creates the ability for cities and other public entities to invest in small community banks. One of the barriers to their participation in the past has been that they have to individually collateralize their funds. This new program is called SEDAR, is Certificate of Deposit Account Registry Service. It is federally guaranteed by the FDIC and amounts up to $30 million. Treasury has identified approximately nine banks in L.A. City proper that we will be doing outreach to, to see if they want to participate in this program by enrolling with the promontory network. I think it's an excellent opportunity to invest in the community. It creates jobs in the community and it keeps funding in the community. And it gives the banks an opportunity to do business with the city of Los Angeles.
Okay. Colleagues, I think that is so important with that new legislation, our local banks that we may have dealings with are now eligible to be recipients in deposits from the city of Los Angeles. And then finally, Joy, will you comment on the issue of the payroll cards and what that means to our employees?
Well, and there's been a slight update, but when we reported to committee, we were looking at the possibility of issuing payroll cards in the event of disaster or emergency, and then that way we could work directly with the banks and not have to worry about issuing paper checks. We are continuing to look at that option and we thought, and working with the controllers too, and, and seeing if that's really a viable option. We may have even a more efficient way to do it. The banks, we're working with the banks to see if they can use actually our last payroll run and just, if we have to do checks, do the checks from the last payroll run. So we're, we may have a slightly more efficient way to do it than the payroll cards that we first reported a couple of months ago.
Thank you very much. I just want to join with comments Mr. Smith made last night at our budget meeting of how well you've transformed that department and what we're seeing the benefits ongoing in the fact that they, tell us again, double star rating?
Triple A.
Triple A, triple A rating, okay. Triple A rating as it relates to our investments. And so I really appreciate your effort. You may want to introduce your new financial person with you.
Yes, I would, and thank you for your comments, Councilmember Parks. And for the Councilmembers who have not met him, I'm pleased to introduce Hal Noctree, who's the city's new chief investment officer, and I think will be able to do great things and squeeze some, some monies out of the portfolio just with his experience. And if I may, if you could. If I will.
Sure. My name's Hal Noctree. I've been in the financial services industry for over 20 years. I started my career actually in New York, working for an investment bank, Drexel Burnham Lambert, as a, as a bond trader. And during the course of the past 20 years, I've worked in the, with the management of institutional and private client portfolios and have received my master's in business from the University of Southern California, and in 1998 acquired my CFA designation.
Thank you very much. And I think we've already benefited from his expertise in that we advised the committee just last night that through his efforts for this fiscal year, he's recovered about $2 million with the next fiscal, about $3 million, which is great news for a budget that needs $5 million. So appreciate your efforts and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Those three. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Item 24, called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item number 24 before us.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President and Congressman of the time, but I'd like to ask our department folks that are here, Ms. Washington and, I believe we might have Lisa Carlson from the watershed protection division as well. Please come to the table. Ms. Washington, would you like to join us? No? Okay. Okay, so how about the CLA? Can we get the CLA at the table?
First of all, colleagues, I stand here to support the funding of the three projects that right now are connected with this action, which is the Wilmington Drain Restoration Multi-Use Project, the South L.A. Waylands Park, and the North Side Water Creek. The Integrated Regional Water Management Plan is a joint plan that's been worked with the County of L.A., Department of Water and Power, and the sanitation and county with the lead in this process. But as I went through the series of meetings throughout the L.A. Revitalization Master Plan, it became very clear that many folks believed that this was one of the efforts to address and deal with the watershed plan, which is far from the truth. The L.A. River Revitalization Master Plan is focused on the river. The watershed is like a huge puzzle that we're trying to piece together, and we have different efforts that are coming forward to address that particular concern. And I'm also very happy to see that grant funding that will be offset by some of the money that the city has committed from Prop O for two or three projects, and this is extremely important because of the leveraging we need to establish with Prop O money, given that other sources are very much needed in light of how minimal dollars Prop O has to offer, in light of the level of need we have for funding. My question here to the staff is, as we look at these tensions and how we fund projects, can you, can the Bureau of Sanitation answer a question regarding the IRWMP in terms of evaluating, evaluating the overall contribution towards the regional needs of the watershed? As we're looking at these projects, how are they contributing to the regional watershed needs? And how are you weighing those, those projects?
The IRWMP comes out of Proposition 50, which was voted into law by the people of California in 2002. It's a grant, and it comes from Chapter 8 of Proposition 50, and this grant has certain requirements. It requires storm water quality to be addressed. It requires drinking water quality to be addressed, and also open space issues. And in order to apply, projects have to have a certain amount of preliminary work done. For these projects in general, they already had their concept proposals and concept reports prepared, and that made them feasible to go forward. These were among quite a number of projects that were prepared for the general Los Angeles, excuse me, the Greater Los Angeles Regional IRWM. And of those, 10 projects were prepared, excuse me, 13 projects were prepared for the Prop 15 grant, only three of which came from the City of Los Angeles. So this was a regional effort with the county and a number of other cities and organizations. So the Bureau of Los Angeles prepared these in conjunction with other city departments. We spoke with the Department of Water and Power, Department of Recreation and Parks, and also the Bureau of Engineering to see which projects were furthest along and met the other requirements of Proposition 50.
So I know the City of L.A. has submitted many other projects under the IRWMP, including many from the L.A. River Revitalization Master Plan. Will be the process to go after future funding under the IRWMP?
Well, the IRWMP contains a list of, a comprehensive listing of about 1,500 water quality, water sustainability projects. Additionally, it knows that the CAO and the CLA are also compiling a list of capital projects that the city could potentially go after funding for. Through both that and the IRWMP, the Los Angeles River Revitalization Master Plan projects are very high priorities in those, and both of those are targeting the state, requesting money from the IRWMP specifically detailed to Proposition 50. The overall city's list of projects and proposals will be able to target multiple different fund sources.
So the assumption is that there is a watershed plan out there, and these projects are filling this puzzle, correct?
Absolutely. That was one of the main purposes of the, of the Integrated Water Management Plan.
So what gaps exist today that allows us to fulfill that watershed plan? Does anyone have that perspective?
There are a number of gaps that need to be filled. There's some regulatory issues that need to be addressed. Total maximum daily loads or TMDLs are one of the things that some of these projects address, and other watershed issues. So these are filling in some of those gaps.
Now, how can the council work with you to make sure that we're filling those gaps? We submit proposals, we have a whole range of projects that are emerging through the Master Realization Plan for the river. How is it that the council provide a role in terms of understanding your priorities as administrators who are moving these projects? I'd like to get a better understanding and a tighter coordination. I wish Sharon was here, because I know he does a lot of the quarterbacking, if you will, in the process, and I would wish Ms. Washington could join us at the table to maybe give us, give me some perspective on that, but I guess she chooses not to. But the fact is, it's that kind of leadership that I'm looking for, and I want to enhance that coordination and minimize tensions and take use of our time so that we can be productive in producing a strategy. So I appreciate Ms. Washington joining us.
Rita Robbins, Director of Bureau of Sanitation. We've been working very closely, not only with your office, but with the entire council office with regard to the integration of water and watershed protection throughout the entire region. The whole point of this is to be able to have a regional plan that puts together the framework so we can fill in the puzzle. So there will be other opportunities for coordination and connection, and you're right, Mr. Karazani Sharon has been doing an excellent job in watershed protection to try to bring us closer to leveraging our dollars, not only with Prop O, but Prop 50, hopefully Prop 85 will be bringing all of these together. But what we needed that really penalized us in the past was a plan. And so now that the plan is there, along with the L.A. River Revitalization Plan and many others, is to integrate these into one, including the Department of Water and Power, including our state board, so that we can leverage our dollars better and have a better visibility at the state level, because that was one of the things the state said we did poorly. So our attempt in moving this along is to be able to put that foundation and framework there to build upon.
And believe me, I understand the Herculean effort this watershed plan means for the region, given all the jurisdictions and all the cities involved, and it is no easy task. I understand that.
Oh, absolutely.
But it is also, I think, very constructive that if we as a council, and I appreciate your support, Ms. Washington, in everything you've done, and the staff, but we still also need to improve our incremental piece of information that come forward, how it comes to us. The fact is, we have many stakeholders who don't have the privilege of understanding what the regional watershed is like, and the fact that we have this huge funding gap to address it appropriately, and that the river realization plan is but one small component of a very huge issue. And that's the essence of my discussion today, and the essence of my questions, is I understand Sharon's a quarterback, but it's sometimes good to have a quarterback talk to other teams to build up the kind of base that will support him in the long run, and understand how we can better leverage these funds. So it is in that spirit that I raise these questions.
Oh, and the question's well taken, Councilmember, and you certainly have been a major running back with regard to this, you know? Not only do we have a number of quarterbacks, we have a number of runners that are trying to make sure we get the word out so that we can continue to reach people, and we're only one segment of it. I mean, there are a number of other people that are out there trying to reach out and make sure people understand where we are. We have not only our consultants with others that are working with us, and not to mention the Department of Water and Power, who has really stepped up to try its best to work with us and linkages with us, along with L.A. County. So there are a number of others out there other than Sharon, and other than your offices, and other than the river, that are also trying to reach out to make sure we have other input to this process, and that we use that process in order to gain money. Because, as you know, not only on one side, I often talk about the Bermuda Triangle of issues, they're all very good, common goals to good, but we have the regulatory issues that must be addressed on the TMDL issues, because those are time-driven. We have the want projects that are necessary for the community that we're building money for, that we're trying to bring all of that together so that we don't misstep or that we don't create problems for ourselves down the road. So you're absolutely right. There has to continually be an exchange of information coming and going so that we can make this a better process.
And as we move forward on the implementation of the river plan, and its rather small role in the greater watershed issue, that every opportunity we have to leverage those funds, especially the limited Prop O funds, we can actually do that. But it requires that we understand where the department is going, and how they're addressing that watershed, and how they're evaluating these projects, and why one over the other when you have, you know, I think, a level of efficiencies in many of them. In your, in our action today, and our therefore is section two, there's a reference to the $10 million, $50,000 for the implementation of the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan on behalf of the Greater L.A. County Region. But I think what we need to assert, and I'd like to do this as a friendly amendment to clarify, that that amount is for this round only. There are other rounds that are coming forward.
Absolutely.
We don't want to make, we want to make sure that we don't limit ourselves to this round.
Oh, absolutely, man. We're not going to let one down go past us without taking a swipe at it.
Exactly. But given this, the way it was stated, I want to make sure that friendly amendment was made to clarify that. Okay, well, again, thank you so much, and I know we're running out of time, but appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and thank you for the great work you've been doing. I know that in committee, we had a very good discussion as well on aspects of the river plan, so congratulations on that. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item.
Item 33, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item number 33 is now before us.
I bet it is.
That would be the, Madam Clerk, will you read the item?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
The City Employee Club License Agreement?
Yes. Colleagues, I called this special because we had, we had a very interesting discussion in our committee about this. I guess it's the first time we've ever considered licensing our city seal for legitimate selling of it, and we've decided, or we decided in committee that was a good idea, and I hope you agree, that we should enter into a non-exclusive license agreement with our city employees' club to sell the merchandise bearing the city seal. And I think if there was any group that is appropriate to have this non-exclusive license agreement, it would be our city employees' club. I think they're the perfect organization to sell this. I took it a step further and am hoping that we can, we can move forward in the spirit of this and look at setting up a store in City Hall where our city employees' club could actually sell the merchandise in a, in a certain venue that I think a lot of people would, would love. I know we have a lot of visitors to come to City Hall, and I think it's perfect to have a City Hall store located somewhere in City Hall and let our city employees profit from that and sell our city seal merchandise. I think it's great, mugs, keychains, caps, t-shirts, you know, who wouldn't want an Ed Reyes keychain? I mean, you know? But, but I think many of us who, many of us who, yeah, with the river on it. Many of us who travel to other cities, you like to walk away with a souvenir from where you are, so I think that's the next level. But the first level is to enter into this license agreement with our city employees' club, and it's a great club. It's growing in membership all the time, and I just think there's no better, perfect group than they are to, to sell this merchandise. And again, I'd like to take it one step up and really look, I hope we have your support to create a store here in City Hall to sell this merchandise. So with that, I would love to have your unanimous support on this. And in doing that, kind of another unanimous support of our city employees' club. It's a great club, it's a great service to all of us. I know I'm a member, and let's endorse them and endorse this idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. And with that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved. Next item.
Item number 35, called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer?
Yes.
Now, we do have one card on this as well, if you'd like to hear that, but that would require reopening the hearing.
Sure. Should we go with the public speaker first, or?
Up to you. It's not required, but if you'd like to reopen it, um-
Okay, I'll reopen it after.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and I want to give thanks to President Garcetti for also moving this forward. This item here will correct our municipal code that makes the city unnecessarily unfriendly to citizens of other countries. You see, right now, under city law, when you check into a hotel or motel, you need an ID to check in. Our city law defines that ID to include every kind of ID under the blue sky except for, well, not except for, but it includes many ways to check in, but one that is not included right now is a counselor ID. The law doesn't allow hotels to accept this extremely common form of ID, and these are IDs issued by foreign countries. Right now, you can use such an ID to open a bank account, you can even use one as a form of ID here at the City of Los Angeles to get city services. So it certainly makes sense to allow hotels and motels to accept these and allow foreign travelers to use our hotels and motels. So with that, I hope you would support this item, and again, I want to thank President Garcetti for working with me on this item to bring this to the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and if we move to reopen the public hearing, we have one speaker. I'd like to invite Ray Patel, the president of the Northeast Los Angeles Hotel Owners Association, forward. Welcome, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti and members of City Council. My name is Ray Patel. I am the president of the Los Angeles Lodging Association based out of northeast L.A. This particular item, Councilmember Weezer spoke about, was, was one of the items that we lobbied for and informed this council of that was excluding the counselor ID in the LAMC 4149 law, which is referred to as Hotel Registration Card Law. This is not the only item in the ordinance that went too far. I would like to remind this council that the other motions are coming through that would further correct the problems in LAMC 4149. The counselor IDs are very important to us, and we'd like to thank Councilman Weezer and Councilmember Garcetti for supporting us on this agenda item. I would like to request this council, on behalf of the lodging establishments of Los Angeles City, to support this motion and vote to amend this law, LAMC 4149. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work on this as well. We appreciate everybody's presence here today. Thank you for coming down and making time in your day. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. We'll send that forthwith without objection. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is item number 46, and that was called special by Councilmember Parks, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Okay, Mr. Parks, item number 46.
Could we hold that for just a second? We have a correction on the amending motion, so it should be there. Just a second.
We need to amend the amendment. Okay, we got it.
Yeah.
Um, let's go to the next item, please.
Uh, next item is item 48, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item 48 is before us. Michael Carrion is our speaker. Mr. Carrion here. Once, twice, if not, we'll close the public hearing and go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 52 was called special by Councilmember Hahn, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed.
Okay. No comments? Okay. Let's go ahead then, and if nobody wishes to be heard, let's open the roll, the substituted, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 54 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, we have item number 54.
Yes, I'd just like to ask community to support on a reinstatement of a $50,000 reward motion. On Tuesday, April 25th, 2006, Tayah Jones was killed during a multiple, due to multiple gunshot wounds. She was last seen leaving her work at approximately 2:00 P.M. on Thursday, April 20th. She was subsequently reported as a missing person on Friday, April 21st, 2006. Due to the lack of leads, this case has not been solved, and we're asking publics-
Due to the lack of leads, this case has not been solved, and we're asking public assistance and also the reinstatement. Any leads on this case should be directed to Detective Kevin Huff at 77th homicide Division, 213-485-1383.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Somebody else wishes to be heard? Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Do we have the amendment to the amending motion, Mr. Parks? Are we still waiting that? Yeah, why don't we do that verbally?
On the amending, the correction to the amending motion is that, under item four, in the narrative paragraph, instead of $826,800, it should be $902,800. And then under the subtotal, under the column FROM, that $902,800 figure, $800,000 figure should be 826,800. So it's just transposing those two figures on item four.
Okay. There's no objection, those will be accepted as friendly amendments to the amending motion, and let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a special one, and that was presented by Councilmember Reyes, seconded by Council President Garcetti, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney, the findings, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Council staff has also clarified for me facts not reflected in the written motion. Since the posting of today's agenda this past weekend, city staff has been made aware of near-miss pedestrian automobile collisions outside of the newly opened Rio de los Angeles Park. Immediate action is required to instruct Department of Transportation staff to immediately take steps to mitigate the impact of traffic in order to protect the public safety at that location. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Anybody on the findings? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those findings have been made, and pursuant to Rule 23 of the council rules, that is now before us. Mr. Reyes, the maker of the motion.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as you know, first, I want to thank all my colleagues that attended that day, Friday we opened up Taylor Yard Park, and thank in particular Councilmember Garcetti for his eloquence in recognizing the hard work of District One. But since then, we've had many, many, many children, families, who live around the area of Glassop Park and Cypress Park, who are crossing, essentially, it's a, I believe it's a sixth-lane thoroughfare called Cypress Avenue. There are no control measures there to slow the cars down. I have seen personally last Sunday kids walking across the street, and vehicles literally just rushing right by them, near misses, and it's a very, very dangerous situation. Many of the seniors who finally get to go out into a walk in a forty-acre park are also putting their lives in jeopardy. I know when I first started counsel, and I spoke about my experience as survivor of two car accidents, one hit and run, I know Councilmember Garcetti didn't want to hear all those details, but the fact is, I take it to heart as to how dangerous this is. It truly is a life and death situation. I'm hoping the department can come up with the studies so we can get this control feature there before we have a tragedy, and given the volume of kids that are around there in that park area, we have up to 25,000 people per square mile, and the city average is 6,000. We have two, three families living in a single residential area, so it's a dire need, but the safety is needed, and I, that's for an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Somebody else wishes to be heard? Let's go ahead and open the roll on that item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith without objection. Yes, Mr. Weiss?
I'd like to ask that item 47 be sent to the mayor forthwith, please.
Okay, item 47 without objection. I will sign today. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to make any procedural motions? If not, next business at hand.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
That clears the desk. Now it's time for announcements, colleagues. Just to let everybody know right now, we estimate there's about 10,000 people outside, about 1,300 students, and the balance, non-students, about 10,000 individuals, but everything seems to be peaceful and under control. I want to let everybody know that, and I know it's been tough to get some members of the public here for our general meetings and committee meetings, but we expect this protest to disperse later on when the larger march will be happening, I believe, in MacArthur Park this afternoon, so I wanted to let everybody know that. Other announcements, Mr. Parks?
Just that budget and finance will start at 1:30. Give us an hour after this meeting.
Okay, budget and finance will begin 1:30. Other announcements, colleagues? If not, do we have any adjourning motions? If we could all rise, please, for adjourning motions, if I could, I'm sorry, announcement, Mr. Smith?
On announcement, on behalf of Mr. Alacon, he asks that the public be notified that the MTA will begin hearings on the proposed rate increases on buses, and the first one will be held in San Fernando Valley tomorrow, Tuesday, Wednesday, May 2nd, at 6:30 at the Marvin Brady Constituent Center, 6262 Van Nuys Boulevard.
Thank you very much for that announcement. If I could ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions, council chambers, please. We have everybody, please, rise for adjourning motions. Thank you. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Councilmembers, I move to adjourn to the memory of Kay Winters-Wodge, who died naturally in her home in Garbanza on Wednesday, April 26th, 2007. Kay was a lifelong resident of Highland Park and was actively involved in protecting the quality of life in her neighborhood, which in the past included being a classroom maid at Garbanza Elementary School tutoring ESL students. She was employed for the past 20 years as a research assistant to Dr. Leslie Bernstein of USC's Norris Cancer Center, doing follow-up for studies on breast cancer research. Kay was a quintessential busy mom who could be counted on to remember birthdays, family events, host visiting family members, and still have time and concern for her neighbors and friends. She loved her garden and her pets, and was continuing the restoration of her historic craftsman house on Church Street. Kay cared for her 95-year-old mother, providing loving care and attention during Suzie's declining years, and was doing the same for Roy, her disabled husband at the time of her own passing. She leaves her husband Roy, daughter Suzanne, grandson Jason, as well as many extended family members in California, Hawaii, and Washington State. Remembrances may be made to the Pasadena Humane Society.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Elizabeth Ortiz and her son Jason, who both passed away on Saturday, April 21st. Elizabeth was only 26, her son Jason was only 8. Both mother and son died in a fatal car accident. Elizabeth born May 1st, 1980, she was a very respectful, optimistic, creative, and strong person. She always wanted to help others. Her friends viewed her as just a great person. Her dream was to become a police officer. Elizabeth married for 10 years to Rafael Ortiz. Jason was born September 1998, and his dream was to become an astronaut. Funeral service is to be held Friday, April 27th, at Simpson Family Marquary and Chapel of Roses on West Manchester. Elizabeth survived by her husband Rafael, her parents, two sisters and two brothers, and Jason is survived by his father.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Smith? Okay. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the mother Suzanne Manriquez. She was a commissioner with us a few weeks ago. Her mom passed away yesterday. As you know, Suzanne has been a very special person in Los Angeles with all her hard work in supporting not only then Assemblymember Villaregosa, but now as a county supervisor or Malina's deputy, and serves the northeast, and with a heavy heart, I'd like to adjourn in honor of Suzanne Manriquez's mom. More details later.
Sorry, would you like to add to that? Okay, we'll add a second to it, Ms. Mary. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that council adjourn in memory of Jim Tatro, Commander Jim Tatro of LAPD. Through his years, he entered the police academy in 1970, became a police officer, worked almost all his professional career at LAPD in the South bureaus, rose to become captain in Newton Division, where he gained his great prominence was where he went to RHD, wrongly homicide division, and pushed very hard to establish a cold case unit within LAPD, which we did not have. We got that established, and under his leadership, since that homicide unit was formed, they've apprehended over 50, enclosed over 50 cases going back many decades by the use of fingerprint technology and modern DNA technology, and certainly has helped LAPD get into the modern century in crime fighting and putting people behind bars for the crimes they committed. He also was president of the Command Officers Association of LAPD, was a strong fighter for the men and women of the police department, believed in his role as a police officer, and was a great leader of LAPD. We've, of course, talked to him, about him in recent weeks in the executive session. For those of us that knew him, he wasn't Commander Tatro, he was just Jimmy, and he was a very, very, very well-respected officer in the LAPD. We knew this was coming because he was diagnosed with brain cancer over a year ago, and we've seen the decline of his health, and so he passed away quietly in his sleep over the weekend, and it was really unfortunate because LAPD was going to have a ceremony for him, his official retirement was to be next Saturday, and he won't be free for that.
Just before you move on to that, I'd like to add a couple things. Thank you very much for doing that as well. Jim Tatro, his family would like donations to be made to City of Hope for brain cancer research, and lieu of anything else, lieu of flowers. There will be a viewing on Monday, May 7th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at All Souls Mortuary at 4400 Cherry Avenue in Long Beach. Rosary will be Monday night at 7:00 p.m. at the St. Pius Catholic Church in Buena Park. The funeral mass will be Tuesday, May 8th, at 9:30 a.m., also at St. Pius, and the interment will be following at All Souls Cemetery as well. And Jim was somebody who, as a youth, used to go to the courthouse and watch cases, and it was something that he, I think, his whole life wanted to be involved in law enforcement, and certainly those of us who were touched by him know that he has an incredible family, survived by his wife Tammy Tatro, who was a retired captain with LAPD, daughters Tiffany and Tatum, and sons James Jr., who was lieutenant with the Sheriff's Department, and Scott, who was a police officer with the Mesa, Arizona Police Department. He's also survived by five sisters, Teri Tatro, retired LAPD sergeant, Kathleen Lingerner, Doty Newberger, Jeannie San Jose, Mary Frances Danielson, and two brothers, Chris Tatro and Chuck Tatro. Thank you for that. And Ms. Barry, and Ms. Obie?
I just wanted to add a few words about Jim Tatro. He had been the captain in the Newton Division for a long time, even before I was elected. I was a staff person and got to work with him and watch his leadership, and he was very hands-on. I think the thing I remember about him most, beside his red hair, was the relationship he had with so many people who'd been active in block clubs for years, and knew him, felt that he was their friend, and really enjoyed interacting with him, and I would expect that a number of them will be at his funeral because they liked him so much. And I know he fought hard and struggled with this disease, and, you know, his contributions will always be remembered.
And I know Mr. Labange was very close in helping the family through these tough times as well, even though he wasn't here. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, that's certainly what I was going to say, is if Tom Labange were here today, he would go on and on about not only the fine career and the fine leadership that Jim showed, but of their friendship. Tom and Jimmy were dear friends, in fact, Tom had just gone out a couple of weekends ago to visit with him and brought back pictures that we were sharing in council last week. And Jim really was such a fine, fine human being, and really someone who I respected greatly in my dealings with him, but, you know, I really, you respect and admire anyone who goes through that kind of, you know, just severe debilitating illness, and the courage which Jim had, really until the end. Again, it was just such a horrible, horrible disease, and he fought it with courage and dignity, really, until the end. Who would have blamed him if he had just given up a long time ago? Who would have blamed him if he'd gotten a bad attitude, or really, you know, took pity on himself? But he didn't. He was just really a courageous human being until the end, and that says a lot about the character of a man. So we will miss you, Jimmy. Rest in peace, you deserve it.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, all members on that. Mr. Smith, do you have a second adjourning?
On behalf of Dr. Jim Cleary. Dr. Cleary was president of Cal State University Northridge for many years. In the late '60s, Cal State Northridge, at the time Valley State College, was going through severe racial problems. There was an incident in the late, in '68, when the administration building was taken over by the African-American students at Cal State Northridge, and held 34 hostages in the building for a number of days. Eventually, they ended up burning the building down. The university needed a change, and they brought in Jim Cleary to clean up the university, and he saw this as a great opportunity rather than a problem, but a great opportunity for change. He sat down with the students, involved them in decision-making, calmed down the problems, created the African-American Students Studies Program, Chicano Studies Program, did a lot to really calm down the racial tensions that existed at that university, and they never had problems in his 30 years that he was president of Cal State Northridge. When it received the designation, Cal State University of Northridge, the university went from about 18,000 students to 30,000 students, tremendous growth, tremendous growth problems. Dr. Cleary was a great leader in the community in resolving those issues with the community, and was a great institutional leader in bringing Cal State, then again Valley State College, to a real university status, and now recognized as one of the finest universities in the region, and maybe even the country. He was a hard man to work with sometimes because he was very determined to make his university the best there was, and sometimes he said, "This is the way we're going to do it, and you will get in line and help us do that," and we all said, "Yes, sir, we'll work with you on that." But he was truly a great institutional leader in bringing a small college, a commuter school, into the national prominence that Cal State Northridge now enjoys. He died at 80 years old, his wife just passed about two years ago herself, but he is survived by his daughters Janet and Colleen, and two grandchildren. So he did a great, a lot of work for the San Fernando Valley, and a great university, a great institution in our city, and has adjourned his memory. Mr. Curtis, you have a second?
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. You're absolutely right, many of my family members went to CSUN, and as a matter of fact, many of them went to CSUN in the late '60s and '70s, so they watched the changes, and they can agree that those changes were positive, and it is a great institution. As a matter of fact, I have several sisters who got their teaching credential at Cal State Northridge, and Cal State Northridge is the teaching credential university of California. So it's very important for us to understand that any institution, given the right leadership, can rise to be the institution that Cal State Northridge is, so just want to congratulate him for that, and his family as well.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, colleagues. We will next be in session this Friday, that will be in Van Nuys City, sorry, we will be in session tomorrow, which is here, the 2nd, April 10 a.m. We look forward to seeing everybody here at 10 a.m. in council chambers. Thank you, and have a good afternoon.